This meeting is called to order the February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. We're at six o'clock. I'd like to call Roe.
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
In person.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Norma. Is Pastor DeShields here from the Church of Christ?
He's not here.
Not here. Do we like to do our evocation tonight? Everybody stand, please.
If you'll join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the people that are here to be a part of this council meeting. We ask that you watch over all of us as council members, guide us and give us wisdom to make the right decisions for all the committed members of our community. And we thank you, Heavenly Father, for all the blessings that you bestow upon us every day of our lives. All these things we are grateful for in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. Congressman Thompson, you lead us in the pledge.
United States, let the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, united and indivisible.
How does that?
I guess it's a trick now. One time there, one time.
All right, we'd like to start tonight with recognition of some former mayor and councilmen. I'm going to ask, we'll start with, I understand Mayor Hoven cannot be here from last night, and his entire family would like to come forward if others have their. Let me read it for you, everybody. All right, this is to Mayor Hoven. It says, December twentieth through November twenty-fourth, in acknowledgement of his unselfish service, unremitting loyalty and inspirational guidance, this tablet is presented by Grateful City, City of Odessa, Texas. To you. How are you? Thank you. If you want your family to come forward with you, it'd be fantastic. Guys, come forward. This plaque is given to Denise Warner for Councilmember at Large Service, December twentieth through November twenty-fourth, in acknowledgement of the unselfish service, unremitting loyalty and inspirational guidance, this tab is presented by Grateful City, City of Odessa, Texas. These are, by the way, these are the heaviest plaques I've ever held in my life. Somebody's, we hope you have a strong wall to hang them on. Last, Councilman Motta, please come forward.
This plaque is given to Mark Motta, Councilmember District One, December twentieth through November twenty-fourth. Acknowledgement of his unselfish service, unremitting loyalty and inspirational guidance, this tab is presented by Grateful City, the City of Odessa, Texas.
All right, is there any comments from our citizens?
No, sir.
All right. Moving on to the considered agenda. I'll need a motion in a second. So moved by Councilman Stoker, who's our second.
Second.
Second, Councilman second, and Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on tonight. Let's move to our resolution, number five. Consider necessary signatures in conjunction with city funds.
You've got to do number four.
We ought to go in order. I'll do number four. They hid it from me at the bottom of the page. All right, number four, sorry. Consider authorizing the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed assigning the city's interest in an alley that was abandoned by the city in nineteen seventy-four. Dan.
Mayor, this is two seconds. I have to turn on the mic because she gets upset with me. Anyway, the city abandoned this alleyway in nineteen seventy-four by ordinance, but nobody ever filed or signed a quitclaim deed, so that's all I need you to do tonight.
Gotcha.
Very simple.
Guys, any discussion? If not, I accept the motion.
Just need a motion in a second.
So moved. Moved by Councilman, second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Now'd be a good time to go number five. All right. Consider the necessary signatures in conjunction with city funds. Kayla Banda. Oh, you can turn it back around, I'm sorry.
Okay. Very short and sweet today. We're just updating the signatures on our signature cards for our main operating bank. We'll be adding Mr. Morton, Mr. Smith, and Kayla Hedges, our CFO. Our policy dictates that any check over ten thousand has to have a city manager's signature and a finance department's signature. So that is all we're doing today. We'll have to bring separate requests and resolutions for our government pool, so we'll be doing that at next meeting.
Thank you, guys. Any discussion? Just adding more to this checking list. I need a motion.
I saw move.
So moved by Councilman. First of all, by Cornell, second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Mr. Cotton. Number six. Consider authorizing Odessa Fire Rescue to accept appropriate funds and authorize expenditures for the Odessa Community Foundation in the amount of eight thousand dollars. Chief Cotton.
You said it, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you. Good evening.
That's required.
I'd like for you to consider authorizing OFR to accept appropriate funds and authorize expenditures for Odessa Community Foundation in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
So move.
I second it.
There's a motion by Councilman Haney. Seconded by Councilman Vasquez. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief, but don't move a muscle.
No, sir.
Number seven. Consider authorizing Odessa Fire Rescue to accept appropriate and authorize expenditures for JL Heritage LLC in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Same thing, just asking for the acceptance of that five thousand dollars from John Harris.
I make the motion that we accept. Say it.
Councilman Vasquez made the motion. Councilman Thomas seconded. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Council.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
What's on your jacket, Chief?
Sir?
Is that new logo?
Yes, sir. We've been looking at different ones. Just, we've made a couple of different ones and fiddled with some, and this is kind of what we're coming to. The goal is to put a little bit of our tradition back into our department, and that's kind of where the D comes from, Odessa Fire Department. And we changed to Odessa Fire Rescue back in 2011, and the guys want to see tradition in some form or fashion in some ways, so this is just one way we're doing that.
Odessa Fire Department.
Yes, sir. Odessa Fire Department, yes, sir.
Sorry, I wasn't aware of any of it, but I had to ask.
Will that logo go on other things that are...
Right now, we're just looking at putting it on some of our uniforms.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I like that.
It's kind of a three-letter cluster that a lot of departments do. Dallas Fire Rescue, for one, they still have on their uniforms DFD, and it's very similar to this as well.
That's nice.
That's cool. Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
What about that, Mayor?
Excellent question. Good observation. All right, let's go to number seven on the agenda. Consider off, excuse me, let's go to number eight on the agenda. Consider allocating two hundred thousand dollars from hotel occupancy tax, or HOT funds, where eventually be put on downtown Odessa. Richard Morton.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm asking Council to consider providing funds from the HOT, from hotel occupancy tax to provide funding for events that the community has become accustomed to. Firecracker Fandango, Parade of Lights, Easter Egg Hunt, Treats on the Streets, First Fridays are all events formally put on by downtown Odessa. And I met with one of the board members from downtown Odessa this week. They have a strong desire to keep these events going. The city has always had a good relationship with downtown Odessa, and, but to date, there's been no funding set aside in our budget for those projects. And again, I believe the community has become accustomed to these projects and expect these events to happen. And this is to start that discussion. I'm asking you to allocate, again, two hundred thousand from HOT funds to be spent towards those events. The funds will be spent on eligible items only. HOT funds can only be spent on certain things. I've also directed a staff member to take a lead role in putting these events on out of Liz's office. Elizabeth Pretto will take that lead for us. Again, this is to start that discussion. I think we are at least six months behind in planning for Firecracker Fandango. So I wanted to get this going, and this is the first step.
Do you have any discussion?
So this, just clarification, so that group that was hired last year, Navarro, whoever, I mean, they had a one-year deal, right?
They had a one-year deal.
It's gone, and it did not go well.
We're not renewing that deal with them, nor have they requested that we renew that deal with them.
I think it was basically a disaster, but...
And did we not have a committee, a HOT fund committee? Mr. Thompson, were you not a member of that?
Can't remember.
Well...
There was, yeah.
I think you're probably right.
My only concern is that we went through quite a bit of discussion regarding eligibility of HOT funds. I'm all for it. Please understand that to begin with, but to your knowledge, this money, these, downtown Odessa would qualify because they would be putting heads in beds.
Well, at this point, I'm not saying downtown Odessa, but I do think that was a good relationship that, for many years, that the city enjoyed with them. At one point, we brought their two employees on to the city payroll, and it was a hybrid situation where they had a board out there that gave them direction, but they also took direction from the city. It was a, it was a good arrangement. We did that in 2015, and it worked for several years. Whether we bring that back or not, not ready to say. But what I, what I am here to say is, let's start this discussion because, again, the community expects these events. And again, if we spend this money, it will be on eligible items only, and we've got lots of folks to work with on that.
You won't be able to buy fireworks or anything like that. You can just only use it for historic and tourism. It's what you're allowed to do with the Easter egg roll and all of that.
So if they don't create beds, I mean, if they don't create heads and beds, what does this do to this fund? Is this going against the rules that we made? Is this going against what we've done? I need something from the legal department to say it's okay for us to vote and say yes.
It's okay to do this. But what they're going to do, though, my understanding is, is Elizabeth Pretto is actually going to, they're going to keep up with how many people actually come in. Is that what we understand, Richard?
Well, it's a requirement for, to spend these funds. I mean, there, there are two things that you have to meet to be able to spend these funds, and within one of those is heads and beds.
Yeah.
Okay? And you have to be able to at least make an effort to, to show that the events that you're supporting with these funds makes that happen.
And, comma, but, another thing that counts is if folks who are staying in our hotels come to enjoy these events, that counts. So if we have Fandango and somebody from the Marriott wanders down to enjoy the event, that counts. So...
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. I didn't, that's not what we were saying.
So you were saying, how do we prove that...
Some of these people, we've made them count, you know, to get money. We had, you had to count how many beds you absolutely, you did. Everything that gets this money has to count the beds. And if we're not going to do that for us, are we going to make them do the same thing?
The outside agencies in the last round were asked to keep records of the room nights they produced. My point is that you don't necessarily have to produce a room night. If somebody is here, and I, Mr. Ham's not here and he hates when I do this, I said, you know, I don't think anybody in the history of the world has come to Odessa to see the spire, maybe one or two people. But it would qualify for HOT funds because people from a hotel here in town at a convention or conference could go see it. Same with the Illinois Art Museum, same with the petroleum museum. So these events, Fandango, the parade, the, you know, some of those do qualify for it because you can capture people in the hotels.
The answer is yes, we're going to, we're going to follow the law, and we're going to make...
We, we have to follow the law.
That's right.
But again, part of me bringing this up to you is, even if we don't fund it from HOT funds, again, I think the community expects these, and if I don't do it from HOT funds, then I'll, I'll recommend to you, we do it from general fund dollars.
Yeah. With Craig's point, just, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, because one of the conversations we did have was, for instance, the White Pool House. You can't, you can't say how many heads and beds it puts, but if there are people here looking at that kiosk at the Marriott, they see that, oh, I want to go see the White Pool House. Well, who gives the credit for that? The convention they're at or the White Pool House? Same way with Illinois, I know, you know, I personally got a lot of criticism for getting some of those HOT funds to the art museum whenever it got remodeled, the project that's going on now, but you can't say they produced directly a head and bed, but when people are here, they go see, you can't quantify it, I guess. It's very hard to quantify, I guess, I'm trying to say. So I agree with Craig. And let's be clear, none of this money is going to downtown Odessa Inc.
And I was going to make that point as well.
This is going to downtown as in Odessa generic, not the company, not the non-...
That's good clarification. I appreciate that.
No, no, it's, this money is going to support the events, again, that the community's come to expect. Downtown Odessa Inc., they have played a role in the past of leading these events, and the city has always played a role in funding for these events and support with staff for these events. But again, to this point, we have not done much to prepare for these events. Okay? And I think they're important. And so that's, again, why I'm bringing this up, number one, but I do think this is a valid use of these funds for a portion of the expenses to put on these events. Yes, we have to follow the rules, and I'm here to say that we will.
We are, yes.
There are modern ways to track visitors to our community as well. Cell phone information that you can pull off. How many people that show up for Firecracker Fandango are pinging off the towers, and what are those area codes that they're, that we're getting from those? I don't tell, I can't tell you how that happens, I just know that we can do that. Okay? Also, if, if, if a visitor to the White Pool House comes to the, comes to visit, it would be nice if they had a card that said, that a person visiting them could fill out and say, I'm visiting from out of town.
Well, and that was the recommendation, that they keep a log. You know, every museum I've been to, you sign your name, your zip code. That's it.
So that's another way to do it.
Yep.
Okay? Again, I'm not here to say we're, I'm saying...
No, this isn't about that. We got a whole other HOT fund conversation coming up. But if, if I may, so I appreciate your point. Richard and I talked about this as the chair of the DOI board. Yeah, these funds are not going to DOI, but our board is interested in continuing the relationship with downtown and the city. But I think our partnership and the value we bring is that we've done them. We've done these events. I've been on the play committee for ten years, so we appreciate Elizabeth's help. I didn't see her tonight, but Liz, I appreciate you helping facilitate this, but having a group that's done it will make up some of the time. That got a little sideways last year with the outside group doing it, but we are happy to help. We want to continue rebuilding the relationship with the city and figure out what that looks like. But these events are not free, and they cost money for fencing and bathrooms and lights and blah, blah, blah. Staff time, I, you know, from, from the nonprofit event person, go ask Amy about that. Staff time is, is important. So I appreciate that, that this has come up and I, that this is being discussed.
So are we to vote on this word consideration, or is this a proposal that we can vote on?
Yes, I'm asking, I'm asking Council to allocate the funding from the hotel tax fund.
I make the motion that we...
May I be recognized? May I be recognized?
Yes. I have something, just, just to compare things, some different thoughts. I do appreciate Mr. Morton and all the efforts he's done. He's helped me out so many times with citizen complaints and solved them, but this is just a balance. And mind you, we have conversations here that are new to this information, but I think it's going to be less than three-minute speaker call. Some of the ideas that I had is that we're considering the allocation of two hundred thousand funds from the hotel occupancy tax to HOT funds for the upcoming local events in downtown Odessa. For the events, let's highlight two of our largest. That would be the Fourth of July fireworks, the Christmas parade. Those are the two biggies. And considering those, under Texas law, local HOT funds can be used to promote tourism in the hotel industry. This means that the proceeds should be spent on projects or events that result in visitors staying in overnight in the community, generating more hotel occupancy tax funds. That's the whole premise of it. A great example of a unique event would be back in 2004, the Special Olympics of Texas. Wow, October third through the fifth, it attracted two thousand five hundred athletes plus their families and five thousand spectators. That's heads and beds. For the fireworks and the Christmas parade, let's consider larger cities around us, Midland, Lubbock, Abilene, they have their own fireworks, their own Christmas parades. Other cities, let's look at, let's go north and go Andrews, let's go south, Crane, west, Monahans, they too also do have their own fireworks and Christmas parades. So what I'm asking is, what is the probability that the citizens would opt out of their local celebrations and come to Odessa, participate in our similar events and check into a hotel or motel? Using the HOT funds, the Texas Tax Code, three five one point zero zero two A, the HOT funds must promote tourism and the hotel industry. Posted on the TML, the Texas municipal website, just for information, there's a TML Legislative Council member that has questions and answers. One of the questions was, for an example, for an event, can a city fund a fireworks show using hotel occupancy taxes? Quote, "A fireworks show must be shown to promote tourism and the convention and the hotel industry." Put another way, does the expenditure put heads and beds? The answer is likely not. End of quote. So should we fund our local events when they're needed downtown? Absolutely, yes. Do we want a flourishing downtown? A beautiful downtown? Absolutely, yes. But in the agenda, are the HOT funds the appropriate source for the events? That's all I'm asking. They are dedicated funds. This is for the council consideration, as required, does it put heads and beds?
I've read over five hundred pages from TML, and it's a confusing issue, and I think to answer your question, in my mind, as a lawyer, is spend it on fireworks, advisable? No. But spend it on the event, to bring in people, to see a parade, to see a band play, to see food, I think it falls, I think it's a strong yes with me, but that's my opinion.
There is a little bit of a difference in attracting a mass from Odessa than attracting people from far out that are going to require hotel stay. And it is a different distinction, and that's what the funds are used for.
Well, another thing that Mr. Joss Love counseled us on in the HOT discussion we had last time is, you know, if, and it, it's raising a little bit, you know, as, as long as we all agree that, that tracking the rooms can be done in this way, and Sonder Oof was talking about it, she said, well, I can show you the receipts from the hotel that on July fourth, they are higher than on July fifth. So as long as we agree that Fandango was the cause of that, having forty thousand people downtown caused the hotel to have more room nights that night, then that counts. So I think there's a couple of different ways to do it, again, kind of getting away from a very strictly defined, here's my receipt from the Marriott, but again, considering that, you know, folks from the hotels around come out and do enjoy this event.
Mayor Hendrick, if there is no further discussion by anyone, I entrust what our legal counsel has said, that we're not breaking any HOT fund situations, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. City Manager. I will continue on with, I'll make the motion that we pass this, this request.
Before you go, Richard, just so that we're clear, we're not talking about just Firecracker Fandango.
No, we're not.
We're talking about the Easter egg, and even Juneteenth could be brought into it.
Could be First Fridays, could be any list of those. Easter egg.
Starry Village.
Treats on the streets. I mean, there are a lot of different events.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's how it, it is, in my opinion, good to go. And we're not buying fireworks, but that's going to have to come out of the general fund.
Well, as a citizen, I, I want those quality of life entertainments available to me.
We do.
Family-friendly.
And I had the discussion with the board member from downtown Odessa, and I asked the question, are you guys, do you guys still have the capability to raise private funding for things that the city cannot pay for with HOT funds? And specifically, we talked about fireworks. I said, I can't use HOT funds for the fireworks display, okay? Can you guys raise that money? And the answer is yes, they can, and they will. But they need to know that we're still partners.
Well, the way Fandango's always worked is sponsorships, and DOI sold the sponsorships. That's why we had the five oh one C three to begin with, so we could fundraise.
Richard, do you remember the amount we spent Navarro Group for, I know they spent three or four extra bills in?
So, well, the contract with Navarro was fifty thousand, but I think the cost of Fandango was a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah. And there were several bills from the Christmas as well, and...
Right, and I don't have those.
Yeah, that's correct. It actually went over the fifty thousand that we thought they were going to do everything, but we ended up paying for security, and what else, Monica? You back there shaking your head?
Well, for Fandango, we paid about nine fifty thousand for everything, and then for creative lights, minus Gerkey's security, twenty-six thousand.
And security is an eligible expense of HOT funds. So you, we can reimburse ourselves for...
Staff time.
Staff overtime, staff time. That is an eligible expense.
Well, my point is that we spent more than two hundred thousand last year, and we didn't even sponsor it. We spent one to two hundred thousand.
Right.
I mean, so, all right, there's been a motion on the floor. All right, call the question, motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, beat. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passed unanimously. All right, let's go to item number nine, miscellaneous. We're going to discuss and consider all City of Texas, City of Odessa, commissions and board members, including appointment, reappointment, removing or modification, including the following. Do we have applications or anyone?
Yes, so Vicky Gomez, Mayor, this is your appointment. She's willing to serve again if you wish to reappoint her.
So appointed.
Okay. And then for the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, Filiberto Gonzalez. For the Midland... For the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District, Kayla Banda's term is up, that was up January 31st of 2025. Andrea Quiros has submitted an application, and she's here present.
Which, which one was that one?
For the MOUDD.
The Odessa Urban Transit?
Yes, sir.
And the name again?
Andrea Quiros.
Okay.
So Harry's off of that one?
His term is, is not up yet, but if council wishes...
Urban Transit, okay. So who's going off?
It would be Kayla Banda, whose term is up.
She's not written in here, though.
She is on the main list, and the way we have it worded under miscellaneous, to discuss and consider all City of Odessa commissions, it, it falls under the agenda item.
So Andrea would be taking then Kayla's.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if council wishes to appoint someone else, they may, or Tim Harry.
Okay. I saw, do we not have, I, I can't remember that lady's name. Have we got the card, or who was it? You sent us a card.
An application?
Yeah.
So Andrea was...
It was Andrea. And I thought there was another, or two.
I don't remember, but I can check and send, we send it to you for the 25th.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't remember, I just remember hers.
Any others?
That's all for now.
Are we separate motions or one motion?
One motion is fine.
May we make a motion?
I move that we accept the three names that have been presented to us, Vicky Gomez under the board survey, Filiberto Gonzalez under capital improvement, and Andrea Quiros under Midland Odessa Urban Transit.
Second of them.
Second by Councilman Canal. Three discussion, gentlemen? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Number 10.
Without entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Stoker made a motion, Councilman Mitchell seconded, all those in favor say aye.